What's going to go there in its place? Because it seems like everything that's built is apartments. I don't want more apartments in this city. I like the fact that this is higher end housing. And I would like to see this go in this area. Thank you.
Sorry about this. My name's Roland Hahn. Phil Donalds, my father-in-law. Probably part of this property belonged to him. And we're so pleased to have people here in Wilson County developing this property. And after looking at it, we were really surprised because we think it will bring great value to the community. The one thing I want to say to you that Phil Donald was a great American hero. And I just want to take a moment to tell you why. Back in the during the 1930s, he was working in eastern Tennessee CCCs back then. They were coming home, he and his wife, it was dark at night raining. She had to stick her head out the window of the car to watch along the way to make sure they got back safely. Years later, he's head of the plans division for the state of Tennessee. President Eisenhower decides to build interstate system. He selects five engineers nationally. Phil Donald was one of those five to lay out the entire system. Well, one of the things he asked at their first meeting was, would you please allow us to put a white line along the side of the interstate and make it safer? So as you drive down the highways today and you see that white line, please remember Phil Donald. Now there'll be a walkway through this whole system. It's about two and a half miles long. It will be dedicated to him and he'll have a big sign on it explaining what a great hero he was. Thank you so much.
Good evening. My name is Matthew Pearson. We live at 1706 Arrowhead Drive, about a three iron off of Maple Hill Road. We're on and off Maple Hill Road several times a day. There's more than a car every 18 seconds. Having gone out four or five times a day, there's a lot more traffic than that. Maple Hill's a narrow road, no shoulders. Carver Lane looks like it was laid out by a drunk snake. We don't need more traffic on either one of those roads. I was in my neighborhood counting cars, counting neighbors. Every car, every house in the neighborhood has at least two cars, some have three, some have more. So you're putting in 300 more homes, you're looking at maybe 800 more cars on those roads, which roads can't can't handle. Last year, the water department was out in our neighborhood taking water samples to make sure the water quality was still good. Because of all the growth and now you're putting 300 more homes on that questionable water quality. Also, one last comment. I think the plan's called for a roundabout on this property between the two subdivisions. I work for the city three days a week on the square. People here do not know how to drive on a roundabout. I can tell you, you can talk about exits coming on and off the businesses. People here do not know how to drive on a roundabout. Putting another one out there is not a good idea as well. Thank you for your time.
Just hold your applause. It doesn't add or detract, but it just takes up more time.
Good afternoon. My name is Todd Southworth, 913 Bluff Drive. I drive this road every day. And I am for this project and I'm for a developer, I'm for a local developer. I used to work for one of the big box people. 12 years I spent with them. And I know how they operate, I know how they think, and it's not the same way. I don't know when the last time we had a local developer partner with local builders. But let me give you some numbers. I know the staff has their numbers. And this comes from the National Association of Home Builders. If ever 100 homes is built, it's an economic impact of 200 or 28.7 million dollars. The job impact for every home, 100 homes built, it creates 394 jobs. Okay? So in three years, this one community, this one community can put $90 million in this local economy. Let that sink in. Now, the funny thing is, isn't going to the city, some of us going to the city. But this is going to the plumber that lives next door to you and the real estate agent goes to church with you. Okay? This isn't going to somebody in Dallas, Texas. All right? This is different. You go to Brentwood and see if they're letting anybody in Williamson County go on Academy Road and put 12 homes on a road that has construction traffic and trucks and things running up and down. And you have people pulling out constantly on those roads. And you got a development here where everybody can pull out safely. I don't know what the problem is. Thank you.
Let this lady go first. She's been trying.
Kate, 2070 Lebanon Road. My home address is 106 Chesapeake Court in Lebanon. Thank you so much, council people. We, I represent Remax West Main Realty. I've been a Realtor for almost 30 years. I've sold a lot, listed a lot, and I actually represent the homes. This means a lot to them. This is their heart, their soul. And this is the end and beginning for them. And this project is something that they're proud of and they've turned down a lot of deals because they didn't like it. This one particular deal, this really enhances what they think. So I want to read a couple of things that I just wanted you to think about is that this involves a local developer, local builder, local vendors, local tradespeople. And I know all these guys, all these builders back here that are here, they need it, they want it. But they also have workers that need it and want it. But we are, we're in a growth. I came here as a young child. My grandparents were born and raised here. And so as a young child, I've seen the dirt road change into two lanes, three lanes, and now we're five lanes on Highway 70. So I've seen the growth. And if we stay back in time, we're not going to grow ourselves. I'm almost 70 and if I didn't grow to what is new today, I would be back in time and not see the growth and not see the progress that we can see. Talking about our city not having enough money after 24 years, we're gonna, our money's gonna go up. Our taxes are gonna go up, everything we do. If we go back to what we bought when we were younger, it would be 15 or 20,000 in my day. But in saying that, it has grown and it will grow. But the biggest point today is that we have a local developer, we have local builders that want it. We have local workers that are behind me that work for these local builders and they buy our products here. We have fakes and hooker that they use, you know, just like all the vendors are here. And we love them all. I can go in fakes and hooker and they know who we are. They know who Fleming is. They know who Eastland is. They know who Tomlinson in my hand. They know these people and they trust them because they have a good product and I love selling their homes. So, you know, in support of the Hans, in support of this project and the Tatum's, it's a great product. We need it. As a Realtor, and I'm a very active Realtor, I need homes to sell. I don't have enough homes. I have people looking and we're trying to find homes to sell all day, every day. So this would be a great project and great people behind you.
Justin Anderson. I live on Chaparral, 917 Chaparral Drive. I'm not for this at all. This town has, I've been here over 20 years. And all I've seen is multiplexes that were built on the other side of the railroad tracks. They've talked about bringing in revenue. We don't have enough money, but we want to offer homes that are 900,000 to a million dollars. And no offense, but I don't think we're going to have that many people here that are reaching into their pockets and buying 900,000 to a million dollar homes. It's not impacting us. This city hasn't put any money into offering services for people in this town. We hardly have any parks. We have hardly any services for the general population. But we're supposed to be progressing by putting 900,000 to a million dollar homes that no one here has the money to buy. I'm sorry. This isn't for us. This isn't for somebody else.
Okay? Would like to speak.
Philip Donald, 914 Maple Hill Road. I'm the nephew of Roland Hahn and my Aunt Mary Tom over there. I don't have anything against my aunt and uncle or the Tatum selling their property. It's, it's the density. And I know I got up and spoke in front of all y'all. If this was sitting out on West Main with five lanes and a street light, I could understand it. I've told y'all that I've talked to the water department, sewer department and sanitation department. We have an aging infrastructure. We need to get these things under control before we can start to add to what's draining our existing infrastructure. Our trash goes to Smith County. That's mind boggling to me. We've had multiple water main breaks on the Tatum property. I discussed that with y'all earlier. And we have a sewer line that goes all the way out to the Speedway. It just, we're, I don't think we're ready for this. Thank you.
Anybody else want to speak? Please hold your applause.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Bobby Eastland, 661 Brown Road, Lebanon, Tennessee. I'm the owner of Eastland Construction, a local home building company that has proudly served this community for 31 years. With a dedicated team of 20 employees and countless subcontractors, most of With a dedicated team of twenty employees and countless subcontractors, most of whom live right here in our town, we specialize in crafting quality, custom-built homes that families can cherish for generations. For my company, this development opportunity means growth and stability. It's a rare chance to work with a developer that has roots here in our town and one that has community's best interest in mind. With twenty hard-working employees and countless subcontractors already on our team, approving this development will provide a solid foundation for our operations, creating additional jobs in construction, design, and administration. These aren't just positions, they're livelihoods for our local families, contributing to the economic fabric of our town. This project will stimulate the local economy, boosting suppliers, retailers, and services right here at home. But the benefits extend far beyond our business. This development would provide much-needed housing options, helping our community be vibrant and inclusive. It would generate property tax revenue to support schools, parks, and infrastructure improvements that we all rely on. I understand there may be concerns about traffic or neighborhood changes, and the developers have committed to addressing them through an open dialogue and adjustments. The developer has taken great care in his plans to minimize environmental impact, including the lot density below the city standard, preserving existing trees, and incorporating stormwater management practices. Ask yourself this question. If this project doesn't get approved, will a national developer and/or home builder take the same care in five years? Would the concept be the same? Would local builders and suppliers get an invitation? I think not. I urge you to approve this development. It's an investment in our future, one that supports small businesses like mine, creates jobs, and builds a stronger community.
Anybody else like to speak?
Good evening, everybody. My name's Hayden White, two one three KNOB, right here in Lebanon. I'm a local guy. I was born and raised here. I don't work for any, I'm not a part of this deal whatsoever, and this is my job. I sell real estate, and I've lived in Lebanon my entire life. I think this is gonna be a great opportunity for Lebanon. I think this community could be a place everybody's gonna be prideful to live in. And these guys that are involved with this, they take pride in their work. This is gonna be a great opportunity for Lebanon. Please don't miss out on this opportunity.
Who wants to speak?
Hello, Commissioner Wayne Oakley. Not here as an architect tonight, but two three four Carver Lane, also representing my mom. Excuse me. She's at four four zero Carver Lane. First house on the left, south side of Carver Lane there, as you go out. This was a little emotional for me. This was the last conversation I had with my dad. He passed October twenty-fifth. Me and James Camp and Dad and Mom were talking about it, and then he passed away that following Saturday. Spent a lot of time over on these properties. Judge Tatum and his family probably doesn't know it, but me and Dad was over there a lot when I was younger. I'd like to commend the developers for the Halston portion of this. As a design professional, I believe this is certainly something we definitely need in Lebanon. If we want to get away from just having warehouses and things, it's not gonna be manufacturing. Lebanon cannot have manufacturing because our wages are too high and our land costs are too high. What we need is developments that can help bring in a blue collar, or white, I'm sorry, white-collar industry, corporate offices, and that, we don't have the housing that does that right now. But there are a few things that I would like to see them look at and make changes to their written SP. Josh, did they submit anything after November the fourth for the written SP? Okay. So if, if I, we were, I was told I was gonna get a copy of it, and I never got a copy of it. I was able to get a copy from staff on November the fourth. Both developments list, list three in architectural standards for the rear elevation. If you look at list three, concrete, a concrete block, metal siding. List three needs to be eliminated from both of these developments. We do not want that. These people on Carver Lane, and I fully believe they will not build million-dollar houses with, with that on there. The one thing I would like to also hit is we know a school, when a development comes in, it's one point five students per lot, and so that means four hundred and fifty kids. That means another elementary school. Okay? Where's the school bus stop gonna be on this roundabout? I would love to see every development from now, because school buses do not go into developments anymore. I would love to see a lane that they could pull off and get and pick up kids off of Maple Hill Road there. Also, the traffic that will be going to schools that are not on the buses will be going Carver Lane because that's where all the schools are located, is right over here, as you know. Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak?
Hello. My name is Christina Thomas. I live on Chaparral Drive. I just don't wish to disclose my address. I live on a property that also backed up to the M.I. Hawks Home Landing subdivision. So I would have a unique experience of just having gone through about four years of the Hawks Home Landing development going up, and then now I would back up to a new development. And I've seen through that time how much traffic's increased due to that one and the one that's just gone up on Carver Lane and is in the middle of going up. And I don't believe that the roads can stand the amount of cars and the amount of people. And I just want to make it known that I disagree with this. And as a resident of having backed up already to four years of one of these developments, it's just, I don't think it's a good idea. I don't, it's really messed up our green spaces. My backyard, I can hear all the way to Carver Lane and the traffic all the time. And we have a great, we have a great symbiosis of birds, owls, you know, lots of wildlife. And I'm hearing less and less of that all the time, less birds that I used to hear all the time. And it's important to keep that because when you lose your birds, your insects, habitats like that, you, you know, you start to lose your spaces. And I just don't see any good ideas of, you know, I just think that's not a good idea, all these new homes. I just think it's gonna mess up a lot of the wildlife. And yes, I don't think the infrastructure can handle the cars. And I just wanted to make my opinion known, and thank you very much.
Anybody else like to speak?
Hello, I'm Heather Grimes. I'm with Reagan Smith. I'm here on behalf of Summit Development. I just wanted to kind of hit on some of our additional standards in addition to kind of what has been said. The way that we currently have our code written, we do have the seventy-five percent of the masonry on all sides. We would like to go ahead and do that on both sides, so it's not just Arden, it's also in Halston. One other benefit that has not been mentioned is that the, that each, the homes will be deeded to twenty-three hundred square foot under roof. And in addition to that, another good point is that this, these developments in total will have eight point nine linear feet of sidewalks in addition to the greenways that are around. And then, of course, parking concerns. We have increased our parking to allow for four cars parked with longer driveways, set back in recessed garages on the fronts, and then we'll have a lot of side-loaded garages as well. So I just wanted to add those kind of additional standards.
Hey, Heather, while you're up there.
Yes.
Since you are the engineer on, on design, how does, how would a school bus come in and out of the, those subdivisions? Since that's one of the questions that was asked.
All of our roads will be designed to kind of city standards. The roundabout will be big enough to, for all kind of service vehicles, you know, school buses included. I'm assuming that there will be bus stops. We don't, we're not far enough along that design to know exactly where those would be. But, you know, we do have that amenity area kind of at our front location on the Arden District. That might be a great spot for, for said bus stop.
Okay.
Thank you.
Derek Dodson, one oh six Chapman Drive. Three or four times now, proposed developments on the hundred and fifty acre property on the left have come before the planning commission for consideration, and this time I'm going to comment with three, three points. Near the hundred and, hundred and fifty raw acres is at least two hundred and fifty more acres of raw land, thereby potentially seven hundred and fifty more future houses on this stretch of Maple Hill Road and the resulting traffic, and also the ensuing congestion at Maple Hill Road and Highway seventy. Second point, at the main cut, a main cut-through for traffic out Coles Ferry Pike is Maple Hill Road. On the thousands of raw acres to the west of Maple Hill Road in the Coles Ferry Pike corridor, this is a question, over the next two hundred years, how many houses will be built whereby the traffic also uses Maple Hill Road as a cut-through to Highway seventy? Third point, there are mistakes in the future land use plan, one being this hundred and fifty acres zoned as three houses per acre, when instead it should be two houses an acre or one house per acre. Right now, y'all are dealing with that mistake in the future land use plan. A developer might state that it's not financially feasible to develop the hundred and fifty acres at two houses an acre, yet there are half-acre lots, half-acre lot neighborhoods all over this city. Lastly, in summary, when a developer asks for medium-density zoning and asks for five-to-seven-foot side setbacks, which is probably as close or closer from me to Josh right there, it causes me to feel like that I'm going to projectile vomit. So right now, I'm gonna go find a bucket.
Good evening. I'm Clint Swain, Fakes Nooker Lumber, one fifty South Maple Street here in Lebanon. I live at five thirteen Vicksburg Lane, also in Lebanon, within the city limits. And Fakes and Hooker, it's something we talk about all the time. It's like, you know, having a, you know, being part of a company that started in the late eighteen hundreds, the one thing we've had to continue to do, it goes back way before we were here, is continue to evolve. And, you know, I think back to, if we didn't continue to evolve, we'd be out of business, and we wouldn't be able to take care of these builders that do such a good job building these houses. Back in the day, you know, lumber was delivered with horse-drawn buggies by hand. You know, now we've got telegraph trucks, you know, offload with, with the forklifts and, you know, growth is inevitable. Growth is going to happen. It just depends on if it's gonna be good, good growth. And talking about looking at the highlights of this project, which I think a lot of, you know, it's a well-thought project, have a positive impact for the builders in this community and the subcontractors, like has already been stated, the plumbers, electrician, the concrete guys, local banks, the whole nine yards. It, this is one point two six homes per acre, which is proposed four hundred and twenty-seven homes less than could actually be developed here. So I think that's something to think about is, you know, knowing that growth is inevitable, and there's a difference in growth and good growth. And I'm sure when people used to come together on the town square with a stone throw from Fakes and Hooker, and they complained about the streets being, you know, too many people in the streets and not able to manage the traffic, guys, that's, that's something we're gonna have to navigate no matter where the growth occurs in Lebanon. So I think it's something that, you know, when you've got an opportunity like this to have one heck of a development that has a positive impact in all the local builders and all the local subs, you know, I'm obviously for this. I think it's a good opportunity and something our community could be proud of. But just appreciate your time. Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak?
Sixteen ten Ponderosa Trail. Well, I'm Ken to Tatum here, his, his mother and my daddy were first cousins, so, you know, there is a connection with Alan, because then maybe it was my daddy's first cousin. But anyway, my concern is Maple Hill Road. I'm not seeing anything that y'all are gonna approve, improve Maple Hill Road. It's dangerous right now. There's no shoulders. That road is narrow. And I'm not seeing anything that the city is laid out there other than this roundabout that nobody in this whole county can navigate. I mean, the square proves that. But we need some hard instructions or something put in here that states about this road and this, there's no shoulder on this road. And, you know, I am not opposed to Fakes and Hooker. I support Fakes and Hooker. If I was building a house, that's where my lumber come from. I'm not supposed, opposed to the local builders. But my question is, what's gonna guarantee that it's going to be all local builders? You see where I'm coming from? Is this gonna be in the specific plan that it's, it's, it's in their document? It has to be local? They can't, they cannot go branch out somewhere else? You know, there's some stuff that's not been answered that people, I think, still have some questions about. And we do need nice neighborhoods. I'd rather, you know, I could care less, you know, I'd say we not have it, but I'd rather have nice neighborhoods than have a bunch of apartments and townhomes because they've just gone crazy. But the density on the west side, I think, has got a lot of the people concerned that live out there. I think that's a whole lot of it right there. But I do think that in that specific plan, that it needs to state that it has to be Wilson County builders. So, and it not get off the thing. Another thing, I don't appreciate Wayne Miller trying to get me to come to his house. And I, I didn't know him from the hole in the ground, and he is not, I ain't going to his house. That's all I got to say.
Okay, anybody else like to speak?
Christian McCary with Summit Development. I don't live in Lebanon, so I don't have an address for you. I'll say one forty-five Bear Crossing, Mount Juliet. I wasn't planning on speaking, but I just heard some of our neighborhood feedback and also my associates, and just wanted to clarify a few things. As far as we are writing into the zoning, a deed restriction that all homes will be twenty-three hundred square feet or greater under roof. So that eliminates your national builder right there. Another thing is, in my opinion, the road improvements and the sewer that we will bear the cost of is a public benefit. We're gonna take two lift stations offline, one at Chaparral, one at Plantation South, and then that cul-de-sac up there that you see, we're gonna put a two-and-a-half million dollar pump station in on our dime. Another thing is, that's a seventy-plus foot right away off Carver Lane extension. That's gonna be about five to seven million dollars with the roundabout all on our dime. And it, based on our study, it will actually help ease traffic in the area based on what's there today. Another thing about school buses, I mean, I live in a neighborhood similar to this, and they're usually staged throughout the morning, and there are pickup spots. We have plenty of pocket parks and mail kiosks and amenity areas for buses to pick up kids safely. I've seen it done where I live at least. Another thing is, architecturally, we are meeting Lebanon's design standard that's in your zoning ordinance, and we're going above and beyond that with seventy-five percent masonry on all sides. We're also recessing the garage ten feet from the front of the home. That eliminates all your national builders. I've worked at a national builder, and that deal didn't make it past the email when that happened. So just wanted to express that we are providing public benefits in terms of money coming out of our pocket to improve the community, and we are elevating architecture. National builders want to build three hundred to five hundred thousand dollar homes. That is not feasible here just with the cost of the land and to develop it. So thank you for your time.
Anybody else?
My name is John Thurston. I live at 16 Mellicourt, which is part of the Plantation South subdivision that borders the property on the left-hand side of the road. I haven't heard anybody talk about drainage, water coming off that property. The creek behind that property floods already when you get much more than a sprinkling. And so I am concerned that my property, which already gets flooded when it rains, will be more likely to be flooded if in fact there is not some start of substantial drain system built into this community.
Who else?
Good evening. I'm Deborah Farallo. I live at 608 Ridge Crest Lane. I'm a new resident of Wilson County. I've moved here from Davidson County about five months ago. I want to address a couple of things. I wanted to let you guys know that nobody knows how to do the roundabouts in Nashville or Franklin either. Just want y'all to know that. So it takes a while for people to get used to it. The other thing is I, my church has always been in Wilson County. So I'm in charge of the hospitality to meet new people and to greet them when they come into town. The majority of new members we get are coming from the northeast and they're coming here because they're following their grandkids. And that's why they're coming here. They're wanting nice homes. They can afford them because they're coming from where it probably costs twice as much, if not three times as much, for the home they have up there for what they can get down here. I see them, I talk to them, I know what they're looking for. And my daughter recently also moved to Lebanon, so we're right down the road from her. She's over at Brookside Farms. So we're glad to have people close by. I love living in Lebanon. I love this project because I've seen so many projects in Nashville and in Franklin and in Murray County because the work do and I see the results of it. These developers have been very thoughtful to make this a project that works. And I think what I've heard tonight taking notes is there are other ways, I forgot to push the button, didn't I? Okay, okay, okay. All right, thank you. I'm new to this. There are other ways in which that you can make the project work and they want to make it work. I love the idea about the bus pulling off to the side. The drainage, I'm sure it'll be addressed, but I think this is a great project. These are great homes and why not be able to go with something like this instead of something that's 300 or $400,000 homes? Thank you.
Who else? Red shirt, it's been trying to get up here.
My name is Robert Thomas. I live in the Chaparral Drive neighborhood. I grew up in Lebanon, Tennessee, my whole life. 306 South Maple Street, across from Frontier Music, used to be Lance's Byright. I grew up in this town. I'm 32 years old. I've lived in Lebanon. I've seen changes. What kind of changes do I see? I no longer recognize the town that I grew up in. The last administration offices has sold out Lebanon. You look around, you see apartment complex after apartment complex, single small homes. You see dwellings that are three-story, big complexes of apartments that are just squeezed in anywhere that they could because someone sold their land with the first person that came with the bag of money to give to them that they've never seen before. And this is just happening all over Lebanon. So this is unlike what Don Fox, the great mayor of Don Fox, did with East Gate where he annexed Dell and 109 to bring in tax revenue. What we're seeing now is just a development of just greed, I see. I agree with everyone that's opposed to this and I don't want to go over the same things as everyone's saying about drainage, about the cars and, I mean, people cut through Tashiba. I'm aware you can't stop progress, but I think this is the answer. I've seen people flying up and down Ponderosa Trail, Tashiba Drive, new people that have been using this as a cut through. Instead of these builders coming in from anywhere and everywhere, we're being sold on it that it's going to be local builders and local people. That's what this project is to be sold on, is that it's going to be for local development and it's going to profit us, the people. There's already five or six different developments that have taken place on Maple Hill Drive. You either go out to Maple Hill or there's just too much traffic. You can't, you can't get past it in the morning. I mean, look at where Cracker Barrel headquarters is. Tashiba Drive cuts right out through there. You cannot tell them you can't get past that. How is the sewage treatment plant going to deal with this? How are they going to deal with all this growth and this new development as well if with everything else that's going on? I'm not seeing any new tanks put in. I'm not seeing anything, no plans developed about that. I would love to hear about that as well. I'll finish with, I'm just, would like to, you know, just put this as a concern for our wildlife as well. You see deer walking through everywhere throughout the neighborhoods. The wildlife is being disturbed and I do not agree with this proposal. Yes, sir.
Who else like to speak?
Sam Christman. I'm the project engineer on this job, working with Summit Development. I've heard drainage brought up a couple of times, so I just wanted to touch on that. We have strategically placed storm basins to ensure that any drainage from this site will be handled or reduced coming off of this site. We will work with the town of Lebanon's engineering staff to make sure that, that we are meeting or exceeding any regulations or requirements. So just wanted to touch on that.
Who else?
Alan King, Maple Hill Road, lifelong Lebanon resident. Appreciate the remarks that the original planners gave when they proposed that this request be denied based on finances and looking on down the road. So I am not in support of it because my take on it is density. It's been brought up before. The traffic is the main issue. You can make Maple Hill four lanes and that's not going to take care of the issue when you're sitting at the red light at Highway 70. You're going to be backed up literally for minutes because it's already that far behind now. So that's one issue. The other thing, have there been any environmental impact studies? Years ago, when the sewer affluent line was being installed, there was actually a lawsuit that was put by the Donalds that halted that project. There's some type of spring creek bladder pod plant that's on that property. So that's something that needs to be investigated before you start work and potentially bring the national spotlight, which it did at that time, back, you know, 15, 20 years ago when that sewer affluent line went through the Donalds property along the creek. And that's just right up the road. So my take is the density is the issue. Full support for local builders, local suppliers of all types, but it's not the government's job to take care of businesses. That's not in the constitution. So I hate to sound negative, but this is not a project that I'm in favor of.
Who else? Going once, going twice. Okay, we'll bring it to the planning commission.
Prior to bringing it up for a motion, on the three recommendations to be added to the, as amendments to the SP, Josh, can you give us a little bit more detail on the pedestrian connectivity, internal connection and the street design speed? What you would like to see changed in the SP?
Sure. So this, I'll hit the first in order. The pedestrian connectivity, this development is choosing to use the newly proposed connectivity standards instead of our old block length requirements. As part of that change that's going through with the zoning update right now, we're not requiring specific block lengths, but instead an overall amount of connectivity throughout the development and to external sites. Another part of that though, is the pedestrian connectivity. If we're not going to require certain limits on the lanes of the blocks, we do have to also accommodate the pedestrian connections. If you're making roads longer, that for the most part won't impact cars too much. They don't notice a couple hundred extra feet on a road, but a pedestrian would.
So would that be like additional crosswalks in between?
Be, but the thing that stands out in this development is the actually cutting through the blocks. You see, you know, blocks of, you know, greater than 600 feet, that's where we draw the line is where we think we need a pedestrian connection through the block. That would provide the same amount of connectivity for pedestrians that we'd want to see in our proposed code. This development has not incorporated that. They're just saying they're not going to meet that unless it's to a specific community amenities. So think of like the trailer amenity center, but not on all the residential blocks. We think that that should just meet the code as it's proposed in the new zoning ordinance since they are choosing to use those standards.
Okay.
Number two, similarly, this is dealing with that new connectivity requirements. For these developments, each one is below the number of external connections that we would require for developments of this size. For the, for the west side, there's one connection less than we would want to see. Originally, we were okay with that, given they were proposing a park on the southern side and that took up a lot of the boundaries. So we were more favorable to this number with that as a feature, but since that's been removed, we do think one more connection could be made. It doesn't have to be made to the south. We still think that does make sense. But I had talked with the applicant earlier today and proposed a few other connections as well. One by their amenity center heading north or up in the northeast corner where there's a cul-de-sac extending that to the property line to be a connection in the future. So we think those would make sense. And then on the east side, there are actually two connections short of what they would have to be, but we think just one additional connection would be sufficient here. We think one more connection to Carver Lane would make sense. That would help better disperse the traffic and decrease any individual impacts that would be with this design. And then they are also providing a pedestrian connection to Chaparral instead of making a road connection, which we think is a good alternative, given that location. For number three, this is mainly just a wording question. So they have put in their SP that they want to use 25 mile an hour design speeds on the roads. There's some places that might make sense, but it's not really a blanket statement kind of regulation that we want to just approve for the whole development. So we want to update the language in the SP to be at the discretion of our traffic engineers. So that way, if it is appropriate in some locations, they can do it, but it's not just giving them the go ahead for the whole development.
Okay.
However, the staff's recommendation is still for denial for this, correct?
That's correct. We do think that it should be denied, send a negative recommendation to city council. However, any recommendation you make, we'll go to city council, assuming the applicant wishes to proceed after this meeting. So we do think those recommended changes should be made regardless of whether it's going to be a positive or negative recommendation from planning commission. That way, the document, regardless of your recommendation, when it gets to city council is in the best state possible.
Hey Josh, while you're up there, the 24 years that you said it could kind of cover itself, is that based on strictly property tax and thing like that? Or is there a formula y'all use for just economic impact overall for that many families moving into a neighborhood like this?
Sure. So what that takes into account is the amount of land that's being annexed and then also the amount of taxes, both property and sales tax estimates for this number of houses over that time period. It was run on a 100-year projection and 24 years is where it crosses into the negative.
So you're stating that y'all would want, you would want, the staff would want y'all, want them to make these changes, default to the amendments to their SP even though they could potentially get a denial, correct?
Yeah. So this, you just make a recommendation to city council on whether it's a positive or a negative, but the planning commission does have the authority to amend SPs as well. City council can as well. This way, whatever you do send to them with positive or negative recommendation is already kind of buttoned up and all cleaned, cleaned up to meet all of the standards that we wanted to meet. But again, it's your choice whether to amend it or not. We think these would be beneficial changes. So if it does end up getting approved, they get included.
On that note, I'd like to make a motion for a positive recommendation with the three amendments to the SP.
Before we get the vote, let's go to the motions. There are second.
A second.
Okay, the motion has been made and seconded for a positive recommendations with the three modifications, amendments to the SP to be consistent with the city's requirements?
Yes.
Okay. That's the motion. And this is a three-part motion because it's got to include plan of service, annexation, and the SP zoning. Everybody understand? Okay. Motion's been made and seconded for a positive recommendation with the three changes in the SPs. Is there further discussion?
Yes. The pedestrian connectivity is going to create a dangerous situation, a potentially dangerous situation because they're not square lots, they're offset. So you're going to have to walk down between two houses, hang a left or a right, and then go down between two houses. I don't like that. I think that could potentially cause issues. Having stubs to those undeveloped properties, I don't really care much for that either. The design speed is going to be taken care of by engineering anyway, so I'm not really worried about that. I would like to amend to where we have the list three deleted, just like someone said before, and also have it in the SP that it's four-sided, brick, stone, whatever, on both east and west portions of this property.
So you're making that amendment as a motion?
Right. He'd have to amend his own motion.
No, no, no. So you're recommending that is an amendment?
Yes.
Is there a second to that amendment?
Second.
Okay. So the motion has been, this, we're talking about right now, just the amendment. Okay, we're not voting on the motion yet. This is just the amendment. So the motion has been made and seconded to amend this motion by and repeat what you said.
Get rid of one and two. Number three will be taken care of by engineering staff anyway. List three be deleted and four-sided brick home on the whole thing. Said that she would do, but that will make it.
Chad, I'd be amenable to that.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded to amend this motion. Further discussion? Discussion.
Chairman, as the liaison to the city council, I'll be voting on this again in a few weeks, however long it takes to get there. So I'll be abstaining from this process.
Just to add, I think one comment on, on the Maple Hill Road. There's three other communities that are before this one on Maple Hill right now. One is just south of the railroad tracks, about 180 units on the west side, between the church and the railroad tracks. That will also connect to the one just west of there as one of their connective. The second item is on Summercrest Drive. It's zoned RM6 already. That means apartments. Another one is, is 150 acres, about 100, almost the same size, is probably just directly south of this one. This is our zone, I believe it's RS9 or RD9, which is a, it's got 150 acres. I don't, my math wouldn't tell me how many homes that is, but we're looking at an additional before we ever get to this subdivision of somewhere between 750 and 1,000 additional homes possibly. I have great concerns about that. I drive Maple Hill, like most of y'all have said every day. I know what the traffic is like coming off Maple Hill, but I also want to say, I love what these folks have proposed. It looks like a great project. And I have, I'm kind of be twisted between as to how to vote on this thing because I feel like Judge Tatum sometime, one of his cases, that you have a real positive thing, but you have some negatives on it too.
Right now, just talking about the amendments. That's all we're talking about, is the amendments. You'll have another chance to vote on the motion.
I'm not going to make amendment. I just want that to be out there. So I'm ready to vote.
Further discussion on the amendment? If not, all in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Or opposed? The amendment passes. So now we're talking about the motion as amended, which was a positive recommendation amended for the SP requirements that you just talked about. Okay?
I'm just going to restate this. The, the amendment that we just passed took out amendment one and amendment two on there. And it's, it, and it will keep amendment three. It will also remove list three from an option on there. And then the last thing was
The whole concept, four-sided brick or stone.
Being four-sided brick.
Buddy, understand the motion? All those in favor of this motion, say aye. Opposed? No. All right. It passed. How many noes were there?
One.
One? How many ayes?
All but Chris.
Everybody, okay. Motion passes for positive recommendation to city council.
This is item number four.
Take a break. Yeah.
It's okay.
Chad, I ask you to please move out into the foyer to have your conversations. We've got some more business to conduct. Please, move out into the foyer.
Go to parking lot.
Go home.
You have to go home. You can't stay here.
It's a conflict of interest. Judge Tatum, judge here, this is very much of interest. This is wrong. Judge Tatum, the freeway rail, so the road's not extending.
Shame on all. Shame. Shame.
The trail system they're building, so they want to connect it down to Chaparral, so Chaparral residents.
Please, move into the foyer with your conversations. We've got more business to conduct. Please.
This is item number four, is requested by staff for zoning code amendment approval to add Title 14, Chapter 12, Section 12, vested rights to specify the type of development plans that will cause property rights to vest. Early this year, the state updated the vested rights code and this ordinance spells out how to apply the state's code to development in Lebanon and codifies how we already apply it already here in the city. And this proactively provides some clarity for developers moving forward. And this is a recommendation to city council.
Anybody want to speak? Bring it to the planning commission.
Motion to approve, positive recommendation, city council.
You got the second, motion's the second. Chuck? Did you get the motion?
No, I didn't.
Chad made the motion to approve. Chuck seconded. Okay, motion was made and seconded for a positive recommendation to city council. Discussion? Not all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Item number five.
This is item number five, is requested by staff for the 2026 Planning Commission meeting calendar approval.
Not all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Staff comments?
No comments.
We are adjourned.
Head control.